Good evening, everybody, and welcome to our city council meeting for today, July thirteenth, two thousand and twenty. I'd like to go ahead and call this meeting to order. We'll start with our pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'll go ahead and entertain a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
So move.
Okay, can I get a second, please?
I'll second, Schleter.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Administrator Krugel, if you'd be kind enough to go ahead and do roll call for the approval of tonight's agenda, please.
Yes, sir, Councilmember Fattalies. I'll come, I'll circle back to Councilmember Fattalies, we'll go Councilmember Huntington.
Aye.
Councilmember Kirby, who's absent, Councilmember Kropman.
Aye.
Councilmember Schleter.
Aye.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Aye.
And I'll circle back to Councilmember Fattalies.
Aye.
Very good, passes six zero.
Okay, thank you. Consent agenda, all items on a consent agenda are considered routine have been made available to the city council at least two days in advance of the meeting. The items will be enacted in one motion, there'll be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen saw requests, in which event the item will be moved from the agenda and considered a normal sequence. We have three items tonight on the consent agenda. Alpha, city council meeting minutes for June twenty-second, two thousand and twenty. Bravo, dispersment approvals through July thirteenth, two thousand and twenty, and Charlie, lawful gambling permit. Anybody have any issues regarding our consent agenda? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda.
Favela, so moved.
Okay, John, Councilmember Favelas motion, Councilmember Sullivan is second.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, sir. Administrator Krugel, if you'd be kind enough to go ahead and do roll call for the vote for our consent agenda tonight, sir.
Yes, sir, Councilmember Fattalies.
Aye.
Councilmember Huntington.
Aye.
Councilmember Kropman.
Aye.
Councilmember Schleter.
Aye.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Aye.
And Mayor Haig.
Aye.
Mayor Haig, I'll just mention, I did forget to get your vote on the approval of the agenda, so I can defer. Okay, very good, thank you.
For the approval. Thank you for catching that. Public comment, I've been informed that we don't have anybody to address city council tonight. But that said, with those that are listening to us on our podcast, is there, is there anybody out there that would like to address city council?
Mayor Haig, I'm not, I'm not seeing anybody raising their hand that's in attendance tonight, right now.
Thank you, I'll go ahead and entertain a motion on the close, public comment.
Kropman, so move.
Thank you, sir.
Sullivan, second.
Thank you, sir. Administrator Krugel, if you'd be kind enough to go ahead and do the roll call for closing public comment, please.
Yes, sir, Councilmember Fattalies.
Aye.
Councilmember Huntington.
Aye.
Councilmember Kropman.
Aye.
Councilmember Schleter.
Aye.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Aye.
And Mayor Haig.
Aye.
Thank you. We now move on to our regular agenda for tonight, first item on the docket is six alpha, Mark Mediger Fire Department Retirement, Administrator Krugel.
Yes, give me a second, I'm trying to advance the slide here. Mark Mediger Fire Department Retirement, we have a member of the fire department, Mark Mediger, who was on the fire department for twenty-eight years and seven months, he submitted his letter to retire, so he has officially retired. We just want to acknowledge his years of service, twenty-eight years, seven months, we do have a certificate of appreciation that will get to Mark Mediger, I'll have to coordinate the signatures of the city council members to, to give this to him, but he is, I think everybody knows, he is also a member, or he's a public works operator as well, and he's been with the city for just as long. So he's, he's been committed to public service for almost his entire career, and we just want to acknowledge and thank him for his service. And we will, like I said, I'll get that certificate circled, circulated around for, for signatures, and we'll get that to Mark as a, a token of appreciation for, for his public service.
Sounds great, on behalf of the entire city council, Mr. Mark Mediger, we wish you lots of luck, thank you for your twenty-eight years and seven months to the fire department, and we continue to look forward to having your work in our, for our city, in the capacity that you do in public works, thanks for everything you do for the city of La Sure. And we all look forward to signing this certificate of appreciation so we can get it presented to you, thanks again. Okay, there's no action necessary on that, so we will now move on to our next item on the agenda, which is six Bravo, the city attorney discussion, Administrator Krugel.
Yes, Mayor Haig, members of city council, this is a continuation of, I'd say, almost two-month exercise to evaluate applications for a city attorney, interview city attorneys, and then come to a conclusion. What I've done as city staff, as we've compiled, you know, obviously, we had our interviews last month, or last, yeah, it was last month, for Corey and Rupp, Kennedy and Kennedy, and Flaherty and Hood, city council interviewed those three finalists for the city attorney position. Each candidate did a, did a great job of interviewing, and we did have some technical difficulties, but that's what happens during these times during a pandemic. But each candidate is, is qualified and has references that I've checked for, to be our city attorney. What I've done since the time that the interviews occurred was talk to city staff, because they, they obviously had the opportunity to listen to the interview through the webinar, in some cases, they have direct, they work directly with them as far as our development agreements and, you know, with, with MIRPAC and some of the, the things that we've done when, when MIRPAC was around related to the MPCA. So we discussed that with each, each staff member that, that would be applicable and consultants that have been applicable. What is being proposed by staff is a hybrid approach, we'll call it, and what that really means and what we're recommending is that the attorney group, Corey and Rupi, handle the day-to-day civil matters and then also development matters, and that, that really encompasses almost everything that we have. And then have Flaherty and Hood continue, and this is, and I'll be honest, this is the model that we've been using basically since the pandemic started mid-March, Flaherty and Hood has been producing and providing counsel for legislative matters, pandemic counsel, you know, what we need to do for electronic meetings. They have had experience with high-level utility matters such as the contested case petition through MIRPAC with the MPCA, so they have, they have those connections, they have, you know, paid lobbyists, they're, they're part of the group that CGMC or that, that manages CGMC. So they're, they're really, I would consider them our high-level consultants for what's going on legislatively and really big-picture items that we need to look at as a city, and also litigation for things like the, the MPCA they have experience for or with. So what we're looking for, and then also I'll add that the EDA and city council would enter into engagement agreements with each of these firms. Really, the EDA has had experience as of late working with Corey and Rupi related to development agreements, not so much with Flaherty and Hood, but, but they would all, Flaherty and Hood would provide those high-level, the high-level counsel related to some of those legislative action matters that, that are occurring. So not exactly picking one, but really picking two that we've had experience with as, as city staff, and that, that's the recommendation. And just to be clear, because I know this, this came up as a question, that the EDA and the city will have, will share the same legal counsel, will be, be the recommendation. So what we're looking for is recommendation, we're recommending that city council authorize direct negotiations with the legal firms Corey and Rupi and Flaherty and Hood to provide legal counsel for the city of La Sure and the Economic Development Authority. I put that in there just to be clear, you know, I know that the, the EDA is authorized by the city council, but we'll have them enter into their own separate agreement. That's the way it's been handled in the past with Anderson and Scoobits as well. The product of these negotiations will be brought to the next city council meeting on July twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty for authorization. Really what that will mean is just kind of general terms, the rates you've seen already in the, the RFP that we issued, so there shouldn't be anything that is surprising for any council member related to these agreements, it's just getting it on paper and, and bringing it forward to city council, so that's the recommendation, really it can be a motion authorizing myself to, to develop these engagement contracts with those two firms to make it official or potentially make it official at the next city council meeting. With that, I'll entertain any questions.
Any questions for our city administrator regards to what, what we're looking at completing tonight regarding the authorization?
This is Councilmember Kropman, I just have one minor comment, but perhaps it's a good clarification. Where it says to provide legal counsel, we should add civil legal counsel, to be clear, since we're still retaining our local firm for the criminal.
Very well, yeah, that's, I'll, I'll make that clarification in the, in the agreements that are, that are negotiated.
That would, that would be, instead of general, we're gonna put civil, is that correct?
That is correct, and that's how the, the RFP was issued, so we will, we'll follow those guidelines.
Okay, anybody else have anything for our administrator?
With, with, this is Councilmember. Yes, Flaherty and Hood, will, will they be on retainer for, for those services that we're, that we're looking at for high level? And does the discounts that they, that they were looking to give us before, will those still stand, or do you know?
So what we would do is just do a direct payment, there, there wouldn't be a retainer for either one of these, there, there really was no benefit with Corey and Rupi for having a retainer, Flaherty and Hood, their retainer included X amount of hours, I believe it was around ten hours. So in my mind, I think we're, we're just gonna go down the road of just having a hourly rate negotiated for a three-year term, and whatever, I think they, whatever the, the increase is per year they've outlined in their RFP, so it wouldn't be a retainer, it would just be in, just legal services on an hourly basis.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to authorize our city administrator to conduct direct negotiations with the legal firm Curry and Rupi, P L L P, and Flaherty and Hood to provide civil legal services related to, to legislative changes, pandemic procedures, and other high-level legal counsel as determined by staff.
Schleter, so move.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Huntington, second.
Thank you, sir. Administrator Krugel, if you'd be kind enough to go ahead and call the roll call for the vote for the city attorney discussion.
Mr. Mayor, this is Councilmember Kropman. I want to make sure that's exactly what we wanted, you, you got off into a couple of things there with Flaherty and Hood. Let's have it on the screen.
Let me, we, we, okay, let me, let me restate that.
It's written on the screen with the added word civil.
Yeah, exactly, yeah, exactly, authorize the, the direct negotiations with the legal firm Curry and Rupi, P L L P, to provide civil attorney, attorney services to the city of La Sure, and to recommend city council to authorize direct negotiations with the legal firm Flaherty and Hood to provide civil legal services related to legislative changes, pandemic procedures, and other high-level legal counsel as determined by staff.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir, we have a motion, we have a second, is there any additional discussion? Hearing none, Administrator Krugel, you please call roll for the vote for the city attorney discussion.
Yes, sir, Councilmember Fattalies.
Aye.
Councilmember Huntington. Councilmember Huntington. I'll circle back, Councilmember Kropman.
Aye.
Councilmember Schleter.
Aye.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Aye.
Mayor Haig.
Aye.
And I'll circle back to Councilmember Huntington. I'll.
Councilmember Huntington, are you there?
Says he's present and his microphone is off, I'm not sure, but right now we'll, we'll say five zero.
And we'll come back and cut, we'll come back and catch it during the next item or something, or after we're done with the next item.
Yeah, we can, we can get him to clarify, yeah, now, now it says he popped offline, so he might be having some internet issues, so five zero still passes, you know, we can get Huntington's vote in the future on this item if we wouldn't, if, if we'd like, and he gets back online.
Sounds great, we'll now move on to item six Charlie, which is the project reimbursement resolutions, Administrator Krugel.
Mayor Haig, members of city council, what is being requested tonight is the approval of three resolutions authorizing future bond proceeds to be used to pay for expenditures incurred prior to the bond sale. So what that means is, for these three projects, the CASA twenty-two reconstruction project that you can see is, is well underway in our community, the electric conversion project, which you'll have authorization for materials to be awarded, the contract for materials to be awarded tonight, and then also the Main Street reopening project, all three of those, there will be, there will be expenses incurred before we actually sell the bond, and, and state statute requires us to pass a resolution, and we can modify these resolutions if things change as far as the dollar amounts that you see in there based on what we're actually incurring. So what this does is basically just allows us to repay ourselves for things that we're having to pay for right now that are related to these three projects, so you have three separate resolutions. What we're looking for, what I'm looking for is a separate motion for each of the resolutions, just to make it nice and clear. It's a little bit of a cover sum to go through the roll call for each three, but, but it'll be, I think, more clear if there's any issues with, with the resolutions moving forward. So basically, in a nutshell, this is just to allow us to, to pay ourselves back for expenses related to these projects using those bond proceeds in the future. So with that, I'll entertain any questions there may have.
Administrator Krugel, question for you. These amounts, the one point five million, the seven hundred fifty thousand, and the five hundred thousand respectively for the three different resolutions, this money will be added on to when we actually go out and solicit bonds?
That is correct, so, yeah, that is correct, so we, we may have, you know, a, a total project cost for this reconstruction project, the, the first one, resolution twelve, two thousand and twenty dash zero one two. We know the bid amount, we know what that is, at the end of the day, we'll have a number, but what we have is just some engineering costs that we've had to incur, just minimal for this project, but this will cover anything between now and when we sell the bond as well. So that number, I believe, is one point five billion, we probably won't come close to that number, but it's just, it's a safe number in case there's change orders or something like that. In reality, we, the, the county will likely have to, or likely be the funding mechanism for that, but we want to be safe, just, just in case, so we can repay ourselves with those bond proceeds.
Questions for our city administrator regarding what, what any of these three resolutions are, or anything specific about any of these resolutions? Hearing none, then I'll go ahead and enter, we'll go ahead and treat these individually. I'll entertain a motion then to approve the CASA twenty-two reconstruction project Romeo twenty twenty dash zero one two.
Favela, so move.
Thank you.
Favela, second.
Thank you, sir.
Again, Mayor, this is Kropman again, we're not approving, we're approving the resolution for the bond.
Resolution for the bond.
Sorry, Council, Councilmember Kropman, it was kind of people talking over each other, could you repeat the question?
Yeah.
Or the statement?
The way it was stated for the motion was to approve the project, that's not what this is, we're approving the resolution pertaining to the bonding. Perhaps if you could put that up, it would be helpful.
Okay, I got it, so let's change, let's change that then, for the resolution, we're looking for the CASA twenty-two reconstruction project bonding, the motion's made by Councilmember Favela, second, made by Councilmember Sullivan. Is there any additional discussion? Administrator Krugel, if you'd be kind enough to go ahead and call roll for the CASA twenty-two reconstruction project bonding.
Yes, sir, Councilmember Fattalies.
Aye.
Councilmember Huntington, which I believe he's on now.
Yep, I'm back.
All right, okay, Councilmember Kropman.
Aye.
Councilmember Schleter.
Aye.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Aye.
And Mayor Haig.
Aye.
The next, the next one we'll be doing now is the CASA twenty, look for, entertain a motion for the CASA twenty-two electric conversion project bonding, Romeo twenty twenty dash zero one three.
Favela, so move.
Thank you.
Kropman, second.
Thank you, sir. Any discussion? Administrator Krugel, if you'd be kind enough to do the roll call for the, for the CASA twenty-two electric conversion project bonding Romeo twenty twenty dash zero one three.
Yes, sir, Councilmember Fattalies.
Aye.
Councilmember Huntington.
Aye.
Councilmember Kropman.
Aye.
Councilmember Schleter.
Aye.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Aye.
And Mayor Haig.
Aye.
And now I'll entertain a motion, the approval of Main Street reopening project bonding Romeo twenty twenty dash zero one four.
Sullivan, so moved.
Thank you.
Favela, second.
Thank you, any discussion? Administrator Krugel, if you'd be kind enough to do the roll call for the Main Street reopening project bonding Romeo twenty twenty dash zero one four.
Yes, sir, Councilmember Fattalies.
Aye.
Councilmember Huntington.
Aye.
Councilmember Kropman.
Aye.
Councilmember Schleter.
Aye.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Aye.
And Mayor Haig.
Aye.
Very good.
Thank you. Next item on tonight's docket is six Delta, the Highway one twelve distribution improvements, award materials contracts, Administrator Krugel.
Mayor Haig, members of city council, before you tonight is the item where we went out for bids to furnish the electric materials for that CASA twenty-two electric conversion project. So you can see, and there, there was a resolution change, I sent it out this morning, as far as a clarification on the total value of all contracts, there wasn't an additional number that pushed that up into the three million dollar mark, which was a typo, but that, that was sent out earlier today, that total value for all of these contracts is thirty-three thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars and twenty-four cents. You can kind of see the bid tab here, breaking everything down as far as the bid numbers with bid alternates, and it's, it's kind of a conglomeration of a bunch of different bidders and who's getting awarded what for the materials, which is the way it was intended to be, there wasn't a single vendor that could provide a little bid on all of the different items, so we are getting, I think, the best value that we had in here, the engineer's estimate for this project from, from that group, D R, D G R, was just over three hundred and forty-two thousand, so it came in just slightly under what the estimate was. The installation bids, so that's to actually install this, these materials that are gonna be purchased potentially tonight are due on August fifth and will be brought to city council on August tenth, so there's, there's another piece to this that you'll see, this isn't related to the reimbursement resolution that was just approved, but this is related to the future, it'll be probably a directly negotiated bond sale or, or proceed sale for this project. So what we have before you tonight is a resolution, resolution R twenty twenty dash zero one five, accepting bids and awarding the contract for furnishing electric materials for the Highway one twelve distribution improvements project. And what this does, you can see that the, the four different vendors that would be awarded at the different amounts that total, again, the corrected amount of three hundred and thirty-three thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars and twenty-four cents. So with that, I'll entertain any questions about this project, and, and we can go from there.
Anybody have any questions for our city administrator? Hearing none, then I'll entertain a motion to approve the contracts listed in the D G R engineers' recommendation for contract awards as bid one, Resco Distribution Incorporated, one hundred and sixty-three thousand, six hundred and fifty-nine dollars. Bid two for Resco, for twelve thousand, twenty-one dollars and thirty-four cents. Bid three for Resco, for ninety-seven thousand, two hundred and two dollars. Bid four for Erby Utilities, for eighty-seven thousand, forty-nine dollars and eighty cents, for a grand total of three hundred and thirty-three thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars and twenty-four cents. Romeo twenty twenty dash zero one five is the resolution.
Councilmember Kropman, so move.
Thank you, sir. Can I get a second, please?
Favela.
Any questions from anybody? Administrator Krugel, if you'd be kind enough to do the roll call, please, for the Highway one twelve distribution improvements award materials contracts.
Yes, sir, Councilmember Fattalies.
Aye.
Councilmember Huntington.
Aye.
Councilmember Kropman.
Aye.
Councilmember Schleter.
Aye.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Aye.
And Mayor Haig.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. We now move on to our next item on the docket tonight, six Echo, which is the sale of P I D twenty-one dot nine 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 dot zero zero five zero, the second reading, Administrator Krugel.
Mayor Haig, members of city council, this is the, the recommended second reading of ordinance number five eighty-six. What this ordinance does is sells the parking lot that is directly adjacent to Valley Green Square Mall to CBC Fisher Building Good, Good Downtowns LLC as part of their acquisition. This is included in the development agreement, which was approved at the last meeting that we had. I will make an update that CBC Fisher, or I keep calling them CBC Fisher, but Good, Good, or Building Good Towns LLC did close on the property on June thirtieth, so they are the, the new owners of the mall, you've likely seen coming soon kind of advertisement on the corners, kind of showing the renderings that, that have been, you know, displayed here at city council, so it seems like they are, they are itching to get ready and, and do some, do some work at Valley Green Square Mall, and they're actually, I think, gonna come up with a different name for it here, so this is the second reading. What happens is if the second reading is waived and the ordinance is approved by city council, then we will publish this in the, the Sure, La Sure County News, and then after, seven days after that publishing, it will, the ordinance will go into effect, which means then we can go through the closing process of, of moving this from city, city ownership to the Building Good Towns LLC ownership. Here's a, here's a kind of picture of, of the area, again, part of this is owned by the EDA, part of it's owned by the city, so the EDA is, is doing their, their, they've done their, or they actually don't have to do it the same way we have to do it, they've authorized the sale already. So what you, what will happen is, is seven days after this is published, we'll, we'll go through the closing of it, and then they will be the owners, and it will be back on the tax roll, which is, which is great. So what we're looking for tonight, just to be clear, is city council to evaluate the waiving of the second reading of the ordinance, five eighty-six, and if that is approved. And if that is approved, uh, we can do it in one single motion. Waive the second reading and approve the ordinance. That would be the recommendation from staff and that would cover all of our bases to, to sell this parcel to the um, Building Good Towns LLC for one dollar. I'll entertain any questions?
Anybody from City Council have any questions for our city administrator? Hearing none, then I'll entertain a motion to waive the second reading for the sale of P I D twenty-one dot nine 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 dot zero zero five zero for one dollar and requesting that the City Council authorize execution and approve, I'm sorry, approve the authorization of execution of the ordinance five eight six.
Favola, so moved.
Thank you, sir.
Krugman, second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none, if Administrator Krugel be kind enough to do the roll call for the waiving the second reading and approving ordinance five eight six.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Favolies?
Aye.
Councilmember Huntington?
Aye.
Councilmember Krugman?
Aye.
Councilmember Schleter?
Aye.
Councilmember Sullivan?
Aye.
And Mayor Haig?
Aye.
Very good, thank you.
Okay, so our next item. Let me think for one second. Could be six Foxtrot, which would be the Government Capital Corporation lease item approval, Administrator Krugel.
Mayor Haig, members of City Council, before you, I'm happy to announce that this is the last order for uh, meters for our meter replacement project uh, that we have here. So this is the last order. You should see a final, um, a di- a project final uh, item coming up here in the next month or so, so we can get this project finalized out. Um, I will just mention um, about the meter rebate project, that's something that we've negotiated to uh, with, with the uh, with the group Corn Main to satisfy the contract as far as um, providing photos, which was a, which was a specification in the project of each meter as it's installed. Um, you know, I think everybody's well aware of some of the issues we had with one of their subcontractors. Um, so you, you may have seen that in the newsletter or um, uh, in your utility bill, I believe in June. Uh, but uh, the rebate project or the rebate program that we have is twenty-five dollars per meter. There's no cost to the city that is being, being funded one hundred percent, or actually um, one hundred and twenty percent by the uh, Corn Main, because there is some administrative time that we're incurring here to, to process those pictures and, and verify things. So uh, but this is the last actual meter shipment that we're going to get, uh, other than, you know, replacement of stock and things like that in the future that will just go through the normal means of dispersment approvals. Uh, but for the project itself, this is the last one. So what we're looking for is a motion to approve the execution of the payment request forms to Government Capital Corporation uh, for uh, the, these two invoices that you see in front of you. And with, with that, I'll entertain any questions?
Administrator Krugel, uh, could you please tell us what the completion rate is to date of those people that have uh, sent photographs to the city of Lusur uh, for the twenty-five dollar per meter uh, uh, reduction in their bill, or credit, I should say? Do we have that number?
I don't have the exact number. I know that it's been uh, well received. We've received a lot and there's a backlog. So if, and we are processing them as fast as we can. Uh, it's, it's really one person that's going through all of them and verifying it, but um, it has been received. Uh, I think that everybody should have received notice um, in the newsletter, uh, that was, that was sent out uh, last month. Uh, we're working on different means of, of notifying people through some of the uh, smart hub tools that we have. Some of those were brought up to our attention as far as news alerts or, or, you know, something that pops up when you log in. Um, just to make sure we get the information out to everybody, but that's, that's gonna be ongoing through the end of the year. Uh, really, what we want to do is capture everybody um, that we can, just so we have a picture on record of all the meters and that's then linked to your actual account. So um, it verifies, one, if you have a new meter and two, um, you know, if you have, if you have a new meter, and I'll be honest, we have had people send in pictures of old meters that, that we, that weren't on our radar at all, and they might not have been on our radar for quite some time. So we are finding new meters, which, which, which helps us out tremendously. So um, it's, it's a good program and, and it will go until we have everybody verified and, and we'll go and use whatever means we can uh, to, to verify those. Um, you know, if it's reaching out directly over a period of time to, to make sure that we get those pictures, because it's, it's important. It'll help us out in the future.
To be clear, regards to our, our individual users, will they then see, once, once it's processed by city staff, will they see the twenty-five dollar credit on, on that next utility bill?
That is correct. Yep, they will see that, um, once it's processed. And I do apologize, there is a, there is a backlog, because it's, we have received a lot of people sending in pictures and they're, they are being processed as, as quickly as we can. Um, so they will receive it once a day is processed and verified.
Any other questions for our city administrator?
That's Councilmember Krugman.
Councilmember Krugman.
Were any of the, was it all people that got the meters? Every, every residence that needed a picture, or were some taken, for example, in the beginning?
Uh, very good question. Some were taken in the beginning, uh, but what we're doing to make it fair for everybody is we require the contractor to pay for every single meter in, in the town, because um, it'd be very difficult to manage, uh, if it was just pointed and, and really the majority of them didn't have pictures taken. So what we did is we negotiated it to be for every meter in town, not just the ones that they, uh, they had picture or didn't have pictures for. So we're, we're kind of doing double duty as far as verification, but I will, I, I will say I'll be very confident in, in the system after this is all done.
Thank you, because some people might think a picture was taken and they wouldn't apply otherwise. What we need to do is encourage all citizens, all residents, all ki- all, uh, what do you call, all accounts to apply, whether they think a picture was taken or not. So.
Yep.
Thank you.
Administrator Krugel, I guess I have another question for you. Uh, when we had our city audit, we had a relatively high amount of unexplained water usage. Uh, now with the various things that we have found, uh, throughout the last few months, with the, with this meter replacement project, is this, is it starting to become more clear as to where some of that water uh, has been kind of hiding off the radar? And we can expect to see much closer to like a ten percent loss of water for twenty twenty, as opposed to what we've seen in the past years?
That is the goal. Um, and we are, I mean, we've, we've identified a lot, you know, and it's, we're picking away one percent here, two percent there. So um, I'm confident that you'll see that never go down. Uh, but what we also are able to do is look at different zones within the city and see where we could have potential water loss. So the city's broken down into zones. Uh, we can look at different meter groups and say, well, you know, this is what we build out. Um, as far as we pumped versus build, and we can kind of identify it and narrow it down to say, okay, well, this zone looks like it was losing more, more water than it should. You know, let's do, do a little bit more investigating. So, you know, not only will this, uh, you know, the, the pictures here, but just the system in general will help us get to the, get to some of those goals that we've established.
Perfect, thank you. Anybody else have any questions? Okay, I want to entertain a motion then to approve the execution of the payment request form uh, for vendor Government Capital Corporation uh, to be paid as we core and main LP for five thousand, one hundred and seven dollars and eighty-eight cents.
Schleter, so moved.
Thank you, sir.
Krugman, second.
Thank you, sir. Any additional discussion? Administrator Krugel, if you'd be kind enough to do roll call, please, sir?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Favolies?
Aye.
Councilmember Huntington?
Aye.
Councilmember Krugman?
Aye.
Councilmember Schleter?
Aye.
Councilmember Sullivan?
Aye.
Councilmember, Mayor Haig?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. And if we could, uh, now that whatever technical difficulties we may have had on our six Bravo City Attorney Discussion, uh, we are missing the vote for Councilmember Huntington.
Aye.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that. Okay, last item on our docket tonight is six golf, the city administrator evaluation timeline. Administrator Krugel?
Yes, sir. Mayor Haig and, and members of City Council, uh, what we have is, is by request of the mayor and the Personnel and Budget Committee is to just outline the administrator annual evaluation timeline, just so everybody understands what the expectations are. Um, on October fifteenth, I'll provide an annual summary to City Council, kind of give an update about where we are with our goals. Um, and, and we could, uh, you know, I'll type that up and it'll be in memo format for everybody to evaluate. Then from the October sixteenth to October thirtieth range, uh, date range, uh, the review will be available and to be completed by individual City Council members. So um, we're, we're still fine tuning what that actually is, uh, going to be, if it's going to be another Google form, or if we can use our actual Palos D system. Uh, they are making enhancements to that almost monthly, so um, there may be a situation where we could actually use the platform and not have to uh, input that data and manually calculate it. So we're working on that. That might change. At a minimum, it would be uh, like a Google form of some sort. Uh, we've received some good feedback from the Personnel and Budget Committee as far as how that worked. Um, if you have other suggestions or, or areas of concern, reach out to uh, Stacy Lawrence, City Clerk to, to kind of coordinate that. She is the, the main contact for that. So um, and then from October thirty-first to November thirteenth, the City Clerk will compile the comments in preparation for the review at the November twenty-third City Council meeting. Uh, sometime between October thirty-first and November thirteenth, there will be a Personnel and Budget Committee meeting to, to go over the results and and just make sure that everything is on par with what the expectations are for that, uh, November twenty-third meeting. And then at the November twenty-third meeting, um, as I think everybody's um, accustomed to, there will be a uh, evaluation of myself in a closed session. And then the, the first meeting in December, there will be a, a summary, a public summary as far as that evaluation goes. So um, we have a few months before we actually get started, but it's just, uh, to, to keep everybody informed as far as what the timeline is for the process. No, no action required for this.
Yeah, I just wanted to add, uh, that as we get ready for this process, as the administrators mentioned, we're still a few months out from, uh, this process starting, but in reality, the process is already started back, uh, when we completed the last evaluation. So you might want to take the opportunity to occasionally just jot something down in your wheelbook in regards to uh, something positive, something negative, whatever you might want to go ahead and put down to substantiate a particular mark on the evaluation. Uh, we have a few months, like I said, to kind of get ready for this, but uh, it's always a lot better to have something to work from than to go ahead and just have this thrown at you. And the next thing you know, you're scrambling to figure out how you want to put something down in words. And I would also suggest that if there is something that uh, uh, you feel that warrants a discussion with our city administrator, one-on-one, please, that opportunity is always present and our administrator would certainly welcome any opportunity to sit down with each and every one of us to go ahead and have a discussion regarding anything for, for performance related. Is that a correct statement, sir?
Yes, sir. I, I, um, solicited any feedback, good or, or bad. So always looking to improve.
Okay. Well, that concludes our uh, regular agenda for tonight. We now move into our comments, reports, and my, and items of appreciation. And we're gonna kick off tonight with Councilmember Schleter.
First, I'd like, uh, put out a congratulations and thank you to Mark Mediger for your service at my own department. Then second, I just wanted to check to see, are we gonna be having a work session soon on Personnel and Budget Committee actions on the community center?
Right. Councilmember Schleter, I can answer that. I am still compiling the list. I'm looking to get feedback from a couple more council members, but it's looking like I've pulled up right here, it'll likely be um, the twenty-third. I know that there's one council member in attendance tonight that can't make it, but it seems to work for everybody else. So I'm gonna give it until, um, tomorrow morning. Same goes, um, with, uh, uh, Music in the Park. If anybody's interested in, in, in serving during that period of time, just let me know. I think the the poll actually closed, but you can just send me a message, um, if you're interested. There are a couple of time slots available, but it's looking like July twenty-third as a remote meeting. Um, I don't believe, uh, I, I'm guessing we won't be meeting in person at that time. So we're, we're gonna approach it as a virtual meeting. All right, I'll, I'll send something, I'll send something out tomorrow.
Okay. Anything else? Councilmember Schleter? Councilmember Sullivan?
Yeah, I've got a few things tonight. I, I want to echo what Councilmember Schleter said and thank Mark Mediger for his twenty-eight years. Um, truly is a great service to our community. So appreciate that. Couple other things I want to show some appreciation night to, uh, want to acknowledge the hospital, Ridgeview Hospital and Ridgeview Ambulance for their donation to the pool. Um, as we seen earlier in the week, it looks like there was a donation of some backboards and some safety equipment from the hospital slash ambulance to the pool. Also want to acknowledge Bolton and Mink for their donation and the private party for the donation of the pool passes. Um, I think it's easy to forget about what these organizations that we work with or work in our communities do for our communities. So this is a good acknowledgement of what they give back to our town. Got a transit meeting tomorrow, uh, two-thirty. Um, and I just want to show appreciation to city staff for getting the pool up and running. Any, Jasper, have you heard how that's been going with the pool?
Yeah, I, we, we talk daily about it, uh, because it's, it's pretty, you know, dynamic and, and moves around quite a bit. We've run into a situation where uh, I think three times, two or three times so far, we've had to limit, um, you know, basically say, you know, we have, we're at capacity and not allow additional people in. Um, so that's unfortunate, but uh, there are, you know, two hour blocks, so there is some opportunity there. But um, for the most part, it's been well received by the public. Uh, we haven't gotten too much pushback about some of the guidelines that we have to follow. Uh, we, we far exceeded what the projections were for family memberships and uh, single memberships. I think we're at about a hundred and ten um, family passes and around fifty-five to sixty single passes so far. So, you know, we've, we've exceeded those. Um, so that's good. Uh, you know, that's, that's good to see support from the community for opening that up. So um, for the most part, it's gone well. I, I, you know, I think most everybody has probably seen the, the center situation where they open for one day and then we're, we're, they shut down and, and it's unknown if they're gonna open back up um, for COVID-related reasons. So we've been lucky, we haven't had to deal with that. But um, you know, I think we have, we, I know we have protocols in place for if that, that happens and we, we know what to do. So um, you know, but it, it's been good, you know, we could make it through, through July and August and, and continue the, the path that we've had so far. Um, it's, it's exceeded my expectations.
Thank you.
Councilmember Favolies?
Yes, well, I also would like to thank Mark Mediger for his twenty-eight years of, uh, of public service. It's very much appreciated. And uh, I ditto and mimic what, uh, Councilmember Sullivan said about the donations for, uh, for the community. Um, and I want to throw a shout out to the crew, uh, for the work on the CASA twenty-two project. It's, it's moving along quite, quite quickly and it looks beautiful.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Councilmember Huntington?
All right. Uh, I also hate to thank Mark Mediger for his service of twenty-eight years in this town, uh, the firemen. Uh, I, as Marvin mentioned, we do have a MRVT meeting tomorrow at two-thirty. Virtually, of course. Uh, Wednesday, I have an H R A meeting and with H R A, uh, the last time we had City Council, I mentioned we were going for bids for the, uh, the work. We sent out bids and received, uh, a war- and awarded a bid to Local Dell's Construction. Uh, I believe, I can't find my notes right now, but it's close to like, I think it was one point one million. So they'll be starting, uh, hopefully sometime, I think this fall, we're going to discuss more of what the timeline is. But uh, Captain Local Dell's Construction is doing the construction work. And the subcontractors that they have hired are mostly local people as well. And then, uh, lastly, then on Wednesday, we have the Music in the Park and hope everybody shows up for it. And then lastly, then on Wednesday, we have the music in the park and hope everybody shows up for it. That's all I have.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, Councilmember Huntington. Councilmember Crowman.
The only one I have is again to thank Mark Mediger, you know, keeping our community safe and serving our citizens is a tremendous service and we appreciate that very much. So our best wishes to him and our thanks.
Okay. And look forward to the Music in the Park event on Wednesday. We'll have staff as well as our city council present to go ahead and assist the Lions Club in the food that they're preparing. And I hope we get a very good turnout. Just please make sure that we all practice our social distancing. And let's also be mindful of the fact that we may have some that are in attendance that may have some compromised immune systems. Or what I would probably say is that if you, if you want to attend this particular event and you feel as though your safety may be in jeopardy, you could either obviously stay home or certainly make sure to wear a mask so you can, so you can limit your exposure. But social distancing is certainly very important. And that's all I have. Let's turn it out over to, let's see, we got, we got, let's see, we got Director Kachara. Do you have anything, sir, tonight?
Nothing tonight. Thanks, Mayor.
Okay, thank you, sir. Well, let's turn it on over then to our city administrator. Administrator Krugel.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I'll keep it brief. We did have a, a pop-up splash pad event kind of as a, as a way to help people cool down on a Yestervane. It was very well received, well attended. So I want to thank the fire department for coming out and doing that. I think that they're, they're trying to coordinate something with Market Fest here too in the near future. So, you know, with the summer that we've been having and some of the heat and humidity, I know it's, it's well received. I just want to thank all the, you know, the residents that have been affected by the CASA 22 project. It's moving along quite quickly. We've had a tremendous construction year so far, you know, knock on wood. But they've really been able to make some good progress on the, on the project and, and, you know, it is disruptive. And I just want to express the gratitude to the residents that not only live on the project, but have to drive around and use the detours so that we can get this work done. So it's, it's moving along very well and, and it is, it is challenging at times, but I think it's, it's moving along and we're, we're doing a good job. So just want to thank everybody for the support. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you, everybody. I'll go ahead and entertain a motion for a gentleman.
Huntington, so move.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second?
Fabulous, second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Everybody have a great and safe week and hopefully we'll see you all on Wednesday evening. Thank you. Thank you, Administrator Krugel.